Stuff.
All right. Hey, everybody. So it looks like, uh, it looks like Rodney's pushed the button. So we're definitely committed in the next hour to forge a little more ahead in our ACP 420 study sessions as opposed to having Alex do his song and dance that he usually does for, for an hour. So.
I thought Sarah was gonna be here, though.
I'm, I'm okay giving Sarah a pass. I mean, you know, it is, it is her anniversary. She doesn't have to be here. By the way, happy anniversary, Mr. And Mrs. Sarah.
Right? Wrong?
I mean,
I think them not being here would be in the right.
No, but she changed her last name, right? No, I'm just saying it'd be funny if her husband's last, last name was like wrong and hers was right. Like, that would be so funny.
I don't think Alex got it.
I, I think, I think the pun just completely went over Alex's head.
Right over my head.
Oh, but he gets that one.
All right. So continuing on, we're going to talk about, um, in this one, uh, taking a look at relationships. In other words, we can tie together uh, assets from one object to another object. And this really helps when you are uh, doing things like signifying who owns a particular asset or where a particular asset is, or if an asset is associated with a particular service. So this is really, really, um, kind of fundamental stuff here, uh, shows some of the power of assets. Uh, so in this lesson, you're, you're going to see how asset relationships work, how you set that up. You set that up through object type references. So we're going to see how you can view them and ultimately how to create them. Uh, now in these relationships, direction matters. And so you need to know, uh, especially when you're doing searches, what an outbound reference is versus what an inbound reference is. Um, one of the key relationships that we've talked about in, um, in previous classes has been, uh, parent-child relationships. As far as object types go, we're gonna see, um, in close detail about attribute inheritance, and also what happens if we include children. So. Sorry.
I think Alex is.
Just making those random noises and I'm like, okay.
I'm pretty sure those are Alex's buffering noises.
Oh, oh, okay. I, it, it could be that, you know, he, he's really chomping at the bit to kind of take us away on how asset handles, uh, uh, relationships.
What happened is after Monday night, Alex went home. Or virtually speaking.
Remember?
Okay, Alex went to a hotel room, whatever, and he dedicated himself. He's like, I am not going to be the person who doesn't understand assets. So he has spent the past forty-eight hours becoming the master of assets.
I did master them. I love assets. See, Kaitara gets me.
He just called you feral.
She called me feral. We, we, she called ourselves feral.
I mean, there are fellow feral admins out there.
Ronnie's a big one.
Oh, I'm feral. Oh, my feral.
I don't know. I spent five days, seven days with you. I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
All right, back on track.
Back on track. Alex is not, Alex is not going to do this.
Focus, guys. Focus. We gotta finish this in the next sixty minutes, fifty-five minutes.
Yeah, I. All right, so. Um, so one thing is, uh, with assets, you can have object types refer to other object types. And, uh, these object types don't necessarily have to be in the same object schema. They can be in different object schemas, or they can be in the same object schema. There's, it's really, really flexible. Um, this allows you to define and understand relationships between various assets inside of an organization. And through assets in your service management, you can map and track the dependencies or these relationships. So you can show, show, search for, um, these interconnections. So, um, asset refers to these relationships as dependencies. Uh, so these are relationships, interconnections between different assets. They can be physical. You know, uh, we, you know, when we were talking about our nouns, persons, places, or things, or they could be logical. So things like a software license. Now, our asset relationships can be modeled as one-to-one. So, single asset has a dependency on another single asset. One-to-many. A single asset depends on multiple other assets. So, for example, a service may have other, uh, connections, like a database or a, uh, a background server. So, or a many-to-many, where multiple assets depend on multiple other assets. So, uh, this is where you might be trying to map together your, your, uh, AWS, um, and you'd have your EC2s with your, uh, you know, uh, databases and trying to get those together in your multiple regions. Right? Now, why do you want to map these, these dependencies? Um, it basically helps out when you are looking at incident management. When you have incident management and you're looking to find a root cause analysis and figure out what's going on with, uh, a particular service. Having those connections showing you exactly what database, what servers, um, what storage devices, what IP addresses um, are associated as part of your service helps you kind of triage and troubleshoot um, any, any sort of incidents that come up. So, other applications of this include risk assessment, um, you know, finding out when, uh, specific resources or, or assets, uh, may have a, um, uh, a software license due or warranty due, or, uh, as well as resource planning. So you, you get uh, really powerful with all of these, uh, setups and identifying and mapping all of these dependencies. So how do these dependencies get viewed? Well, if you're a visual person, I know, I know Rodney is a visual person in, in a lot of aspects. Um, you can see it visually through a graph view. So you can actually see, uh, for example, here, this, this connection here of.
This is my favorite part.
Yes.
This is why hard assets.
All right. You heard it here first.
I've never been against acid. I just think it's the dumbest feature to make a platform app, but whatever.
Okay. Well, you know.
It's still, it's still the power of a database you design yourself. You just gotta think of it that way. I mean, it's a layer of abstraction on top of it, but it's still basics that database design are all here.
Right. So you can see that, uh, somebody in this people object, uh, has a relationship to a team. Uh, there may also be a, a relationship to a particular region as well as departments, organizations, they may be assigned a specific role, and that role is associated with a specific access policy.
We lost Alex.
Yes. We did. This, you, you, you do realize this helps us go faster, right?
Yeah, I can hear you guys.
That's what makes it fun.
I know.
I needed to write something down before I forgot, and it was very critical.
Oh, something about assets and, 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 uh, viewing them graphically, of course. All right. So through this object schema graph, you can view all of the object types in a schema. Uh, you click the schema graph button at the top right of your schema view, and this shows that graphical representation of the object schema, showing connections between, um, the object types inside of that schema. You can then display the details. So you click on the object type in the diagram, and then you get all of the details associated, including attributes in the right pane. Um, you can go through and reposition any of the object types, uh, dragging them with your mouse and then putting them wherever you go. Now, when you do this, you don't drop any of the actual connections. They just stay there. So, um, you, you don't change any of the connections by, by moving them around. One thing that you can do is you can create new connections. Uh, you can, uh, do a shift click and then, uh, this gives you an arrow. You can then connect it to another object type. And then once you connect it to another object type, it's going to ask you for details. So, uh, things about whether or not it's an inbound reference, an outbound reference, what type of, um, uh, what attribute you're, um, you're going to create on both sides. So there are other things that you can do in the object type graph. You can view all of the objects in an object type. So, uh, go to the schema graph button at the top right, and then from the view dropdown, you can select the object type you'd like to see the graph for. And then you can also display the details. You can click on an object type to view its details. So, uh, you can also see child types and parent types as part of the details. They're indicated by gray dashed arrows. And, um, in order to see that, you have to make sure that in the configuration, uh, links to parents are enabled. Now, those were for specific object types. These are for the actual objects. You can view the object in a graph. Um, so inside of the objects for, for an object type, you click on the, the more actions or the otherwise known as the ellipses or the three dots, whatever you want to call them. Uh, and select view and graph. Um, also, you could, if you are looking at the details of, uh, that object, including all of its attributes on its page, you can click on object graph to see the graph of that object. You can change the focus for your object. You can, uh, show all the specific references. Um, now, what if you want to, uh, if you look at the object graph and you see all of the interconnections that object has with other objects, and you want to change the focus, all you do is just click on any one of those connected objects and the focus shifts.
Cause shift happens.
Yes.
Shift happens.
Shift happens. Um, so if you click on the filter icon at the top right of the graph, you can toggle between different lines of, uh, which indicate different, uh, connection types. And then finally, you can change the reference depth. So, uh, the so you may want to start small with the number of, uh, references an individual object is allowed to display. So, um, or, or the level of references. So if you had it at one, you only see the direct connections, right? You see, uh, the, the object and then those that are immediately connected to that object. Uh, if you raise it, you can then see the other connections further and further out. How can you connect object types? So, um, you can set up your dependencies, you're, uh, basically by creating attributes that are basically objects called reference attributes. And you use these reference objects. For example, maybe we'll take a look at our, um, we'll take a look at our object type right now. Uh, and this is, our object type is a laptop. And you can see that, um, with our laptop, we may have a, yeah, we have a manufacturer associated with our laptop. It is a reference to a, to a company. Um, uh, and this company is of a object type called organization. So you can see that the, the reference is provided here. Uh, it's called provided by. Another object, uh, reference here inside of our laptops is the owner. So we have a reference of a person object, uh, person object type, and then the relationship type is called owned by. And so you can kind of see what the interconnections are between, uh, a laptop and who owns it and a laptop and who builds it. So putting this into practice, we can see that we have a object of, uh, you know, then this is probably a asset number. Um, and we can see that one of the attributes is model, and the model is a reference to a standard laptop configuration, which would be a MacBook Pro thirteen-inch space gray.
Are you sure?
No, I'm not sure because I don't think they make thirteen-inch, uh, MacBook Pros anymore. I think it's only fourteen and sixteen. So this, this lab, this is old.
Okay, that is such a geeky take, Alex, Bob. I don't know specifically what SKUs are available for the MacBook Pros currently.
You're welcome, Ronnie.
I'm a geek. That's a level above.
You know how hard it is to step today with MacBook SKUs, though?
Yes, that's why it is such a geeky take.
MacBook Pro, they have M4 Pros and Maxes.
Okay. You, you know, Ronnie, we, um, one of these days when StreamYard, um, there should be like a timer function on StreamYard where you just kind of like, Alex gets, Alex gets, you know, fifteen seconds of, of diversion and then, and then we, and then we hit back.
Hey, you fell for the trap. So what are you complaining?
I'm not complaining. I'm talking about the benefits of object types. Uh, why would you use object types? Well, uh, one powerful feature, computer models aren't just associated with, uh, to just, uh, computer objects. We may have a laptop object type that can leverage computer model values. And since computer models are maintained in their own object type, any changes to computer models only need to be applied in a single spot in that, in that computer model object type. You can create new instances like when MacBook Pros come out in fourteen inches as, as opposed to thirteen inches.
But it has to be the space gray.
Well, these days, uh, these days, yes, but I hear other colors are coming soon.
Are we going back to the old iMac days?
Um, not on the Pros, on the Airs, yes. All right. And object types can reference multiple objects. So uh, is it possible for there to be, for Rodney to own more than one laptop?
No.
Okay, this is possible. Or let's put it this way. Is it possible for Alex to own more than one MacBook Pro?
Yes.
And so.
Oh, why does Rodney get limited but not Alex?
Uh, Alex is, Alex is made of money. That's, that's what's going on here.
That's a rumor start.
It's the only explanation we got.
Been downloading on the servers.
And, and so, um,
Well, I mean, he saved all that money from his power because he's stealing it from his neighbor.
I don't steal. I'm gonna have to add an asset from my neighbor's house. That is linked to my asset.
So there, so you could have a, uh, object reference like, uh, steals power from and, you know, it could point to a person object, which would, which would be Alex. And so you get all of these kinds of interrelated objects of different kinds, and you can pass the information between them. All right. So creating the object references, uh, what you have to do is on the object type, when you are creating attributes, uh, you specify the type of attribute as type object. And then that allows you, uh, once you do that, you can define what the reference type is.
Link, by the way, folks. Link. You're defining the name of the link.
To the past?
To the future.
All right.
I don't know why they call it a reference. It's the most confusing thing in the world. You guys are defining a link between two objects.
I mean, it's not a foreign key, um, link, so.
So is, is, is Alex finally starting to use like database references or is he just kind of using like networking references?
I'm using layman's terms so people understand what the hell a reference is. It's just a link between two.
The obvious corollary here is a link, a linked issue. I think we're going to get so much mileage out of this right here from Kaitara.
Yes, that, that, that's just going to be the key to, key tonight. And the fact that it covers up Alex's face is, you know, that's just.
That's intention. I put myself in this spot on purpose.
All right. So, uh, you, you create the reference or the link uh, to another object by adding the attribute, and then you define it as type object. So, for example, here, um, in our laptop, maybe we want to have an attribute of model. Um, we define it as type object. The value is the other object type. And, um, within the configuration, you can set up object types that are within the object schema as well as object types that are, um, in other object schemas. So and then, once you, once you do that, you set up the, uh, type value. So, one other thing is, if you, uh, as, as Sarah says, you pay attention to the blue eyes. And the blue eyes say, the additional value column provides context for the reference or for the link, and it's chosen from a list of configurable values. It's a, used to filter reference types in the graph view and also can be used in advanced AQL searches or asset query language searches. All right. So some of these reference types, there are, uh, outbound references. So this is from a, a, a pointer or a link from the object you are currently looking at to another object, right? And so, uh, in the outbound reference, you have attributes that link to that other object type. And an object type can have any number of uh, outbound references. Inbound references are the other way. So these are references that come from other objects. All right. So, um, if you are looking at an outbound reference, if you change the frame of reference, uh, to the other object, for example, uh, Alex is, uh, you know, Alex has a reference to his MacBook Pro. The MacBook Pro, when, uh, when having that reference type of owner is a outbound reference to Alex. But if we switch it to Alex, it's, uh, it is an inbound reference from the laptop object. So. So it is direction. Direction is important. You can also have a reference that references itself. So you can have an object type that references itself. So, uh, for instance, you can have employee object types. And if we wanted to take a look at Alex's manager, it would be a reference to another employee object. But it, uh, because you're actually referencing the same object type, that's a self, that's a, that's a self-referencing.
In this case, Bob is Alex's manager.
I, I don't feel like Alex's manager. Well, maybe I am. Alex doesn't listen to me. So, you know, that's, that's perfect.
Well, considering how TGL set up, it has to be either me or you or Lena. Lena doesn't want the job. I don't think I want the job.
Guys, I'm just a pretty face that shows up every once in a while.
All right. Truth be told, if anything needs to get done on the TGL, it usually falls to the, the, who has two thumbs and it falls.
This is the point where I remind you, you volunteered for this at one point. And I pray you don't figure out you could un-volunteer. I pray to God.
All right.
Don't figure, don't show him where the door is at. He doesn't need to go anywhere.
All right. So you can set up specific groups that would own the object reference. Um, in other words, uh, depending upon the object type and the, uh, what object type owns the attribute that makes the reference. And so, uh, you can connect object types, but, um, what you might want to do is, uh, especially in filtering, pay attention to the direction, pay attention to whether it's an inbound reference or an outbound reference. Um, so this is especially true for reports and filters. Um, if you're looking at a filtered object type, uh, you want to make sure that object type has an outbound reference. And so that's easier, uh, easy to pick up. All right. Um, this helps a lot when you are setting up sw- s- search queries on AQL because, um, you can, in AQL, you have what's known as a dot notation, which is object type, dot outbound reference, and then you can keep, keep, uh, and, and then that would let you point to the referred object and then use dot notations to look at specific attributes there.
Employee dot manager dot laptop dot manufacturer.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. And then avoid referencing object types with many objects, since those objects will appear in pick lists and multi-value referencing attributes. Good rule of thumb. Hmm. Um, if you're, if, if, if you are setting up, um, object types or objects as kind of a pick list, it really helps to, um, set up an AQL search so that it is much smaller, a much smaller list than every single object of that object type. All right. Let's see. When an attribute contains too many items, it can become messy. Oh, boy. So let's say we want to track groups that all, uh, users are members of. We'd structure it, uh, two ways, each with its own pros and cons. So you could set up a group object type with a multi-value attribute that references users. So, I mean, that works if, let's say, the, uh, the group object type is, is company And the it's referencing users and it, we're looking at the. Reference list of all of the users of a company like the Jura Life. Easily manageable. Now let's turn that to Atlassian, which has roughly thirteen thousand thousand employees and that gets it to a really, really bad list. Right? So you, you really have to know when to apply it and when not to apply it, or. We could look at a different structure where we have the user object type. And then we have a multi-value attribute referencing groups. So somebody like somebody like Rodney, user like Rodney. Who 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 does loyalties lie to? There's the Jura Life, there's the Jura Guy, you know. You can, it's, it's easily, it's easy to kind of do the searches. You find all of the. All of the users that have a reference to the Jura Life.
I will say for. I love when I'm trying to design a database or an asset table or whatever. Look at existing. Systems and how they do it. L DAP uses this method where the user references groups. You may have to do some research, God help, but always look for those existing analogs because this nine times off ten is already a soft problem somewhere.
Okay. Paying attention to the blue eye. As I mentioned before, when you are setting up these these links or these references. The the object type can be from the same object schema. Or it can be from a different object schema and there's a configuration option called allow others to select objects from the schema. You have to do that on the on the recipient object schema. So. Let's take a look at how an attribute is an outbound reference. So we can see here we have our organization. So this is an attribute in the people object type. For Elena, that organ, the value of that organization is an object called Atlassian. And then in if you look in the linked objects, you can actually see. That there is an outbound reference from the Elena Grant object to the Atlassian object. So. And you, you can tell what the outbound references are. Because in the linked objects portion, it tells you what the outbound references are. It also tells you what the inbound references are. So. Attribute inheritance, you can configure the object type to pass on its reference to its child object types. So. Basically, the children inherit the parent types attributes. We've talked about this several times. You actually can see this in a. In a schema view of of a tree, you'll see, say, a parent type called devices. And then underneath you might have child types like desktops, laptops, printers. And some of the some of the inherited objects that a desktop laptop and. A printer would get would be maybe model manufacturer IP address, right? So what this does is it helps organize, it gets you a way of. Giving common sets of attributes and making sure that they're present in these new object types, especially if you. Say, want to create a new child object type called tablets. So. And so the use case is a lot like I just described, right? Hardware assets, computers, monitors, mobile phones, asset type has its own unique attributes, RAM, screen size. But there are still some common attributes that apply such as purchase date, manufacturer and asset owner. How do we do this? Well, we configured the parent object type. So we have an object type that passes its attributes. Click on the ellipses to configure it. We enable inheritance. So on the configuration screen, we select inheritance tab and enable inheritance. So not only could the child object type get attributes inherited from its parent, but it could have its own set of attributes. That apply to it and no other object type. And then. You can add child type. So once you've enabled inheritance, you can set up child object types in the in the schema hierarchy. All right. So inheritance is powerful, can make maintenance easier. But you gotta watch out for these dragons when you are working with it. So there are some schema restrictions. Once inheritance is applied, you cannot move around the child object types. They stay, they have to stay as children. I mean, basically, the way that you can change it. Is you'd have to delete the child object type first and then create a new child, create a new object type. With the with the same name, but in a different part of your schema tree. So if the parent has already has child inheritance types, you cannot. Or if if the parent already has child object types. You can't decide to enable inheritance on the fly. The the parent has to be empty. In other words, no children before you can enable inheritance. Once you enable inheritance, you can't disable it. So in if if you decide that. You really need to. Restructure the attributes. You you can't just uncheck the checkbox. You have to delete the child types first. So this is important where you actually have to plan in advance. All right, you make sure that inheritance satisfies all your requirements and is the best possible solution. Because once you do it, it's a it's going to involve some serious steps to undo. All right, so. White eye, if you try to disable inheritance for an object that already has children, you'll be prohibited from doing so. This is why it's so important. To plan ahead for creating object types and their attributes in your object schema. So. With these parents and with these child objects, you can. You can allow references or links. From that extend beyond just a parent object type by selecting a. A flag called include children. So you could see that, for example, we have a people object type. The child types are contractors and partners. We have a separate object type called laptops and our owners are. Our our owners are a reference to the people object type. Now. We would want. The owners of a laptop to include both contractors and partners, right? So. What you would want to do is in the owner drop, you would want to make sure. That. When you set up the reference to owners, you make sure that you check include children. You you would point it to the people object type, click include children and so. Every of all the child types, contractors, partners, employees. Would be referenced or could be linked for a given laptop. Say with include children enabled, you select not only the reference object type, also all this child object type. This is benefits of organizing, including children is unrelated to inheritance and unaffected by schema inheritance configurations. Okay. Time to take the quiz.
Sorry. All right. Tina mentions her company's IT assets using Jira Service Management. She needs to ensure that the dependency between the company's email server and the network infrastructure is accurately represented in GSM. Which of the following best illustrates how Tina should configure this dependency? Mark the email server as a parent of the network infrastructure to indicate the priority and maintenance. Designate the network infrastructure as standalone assets since it supports multiple services, not just the email server. Identify the email server as a dependent on the network infrastructure to ensure connectivity issues are prioritized. Treat both the email server and network infrastructure as independent assets with no direct dependency to simplify asset management.
I think it's the.
C.
Charlie?
Yeah, I was between A and C. But I think I'm leaning more towards C. Because the network infrastructure is bigger than a server.
I'm going to translate Alex. I I'm going to translate aka make the correction that the. That the network infrastructure is. Or or actually the email server. Depends on the network infrastructure. So there should be a reference from the email server to the network infrastructure. And it's not like a parent child relationship. There it's it's more of a dependency than than a parent child.
Correct.
We're all still going with Charlie.
Yeah. C.
You got the right answer, but your logic was.
What are you talking about? The the infrastructure is big, that things are smaller. So doesn't make sense that one would be. A didn't make sense, like the parent of server shouldn't be. I was explaining why A was wrong.
Okay.
Right.
Next. Maria needs to understand how all the assets in her company's IT infrastructure are interconnected. Which asset features should you use to get a comprehensive overview of all the object type preferences?
C.
No, that was yesterday. We had the or Monday, we had the same answer over and over again.
Yeah, I'm 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 in Monday mode. I'm going with B.
Yeah, I'm gonna go with B too.
B. The optics scheme of few and so on. John is configuring a new asset type for laptops in GSM. Wants to link each laptop asset. To a specific model from pre finalists of computer models. Which actions should John take to achieve this? Assign a unique ID to each laptop model. Create an attribute of type object that references the computer module, computer model object type. Use the text attributes to manually enter the model name of for each laptop. Link each laptop to a model using the a URL laptop or URL attribute.
C.
Again, rule of thumb here, it's the same rule of thumb for fields. Avoid manual entering anything whenever possible. B.
Your 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 saw what I was doing, you you know, it's like at at this point, I'm trying to be as transparent as possible and. You know. Void. You know. The you know, having a having a louser poke lousy poker face or poker mouse.
But that's half the fun of being able to drive the mouse.
Oh, or all right.
All right, question four of six. Linda is reviewing the assets configuration in JSM. Knows that the workstation object type has an attribute pointing to the monitor object type. How should Linda describe this relationship? The monitor has an outbound reference from the workstation. That's awkward. The workstation has an inbound reference from the monitor. Workstation has an outbound reference to the monitor. The monitor and workstation have self referencing relationships.
I never get the in and outs. But I think it's C.
He actually got it right. You know, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's.
What, you're surprised that I actually know how to use assets?
No. No, it's it's that, you know, I I go with I I go with the broken clock. The bloke broken clock paradigm. You're you're right, at least two times a day.
All right. All right. Five of six. When configuration, when configuring a new mobile device object type as child of the hardware object type. The following attributes or which of the following attributes would the mobile device inherit by default if attribute inheritance was enabled? The specific model number of each mobile device. Purchase date attribute from the hardware object type. The unique serial number assigned to each mobile device. The warranty expiration date specific to each mobile device. Yeah, and I'm. I got an answer.
I didn't even read the question.
I'm sitting here waiting for you to read it on your own.
I got distracted on LinkedIn.
Why you got LinkedIn open?
I don't want to slow you down. You pussy without me on this one.
Well, Bob, I'm going to say this one's B. This one's B.
C.
All right, for the next one, I'm just whatever it is, whatever the next one is, I'm going to go with Alex's gut. I'm going to put C, right or wrong?
Right or wrong?
Let's do it. Let's do it.
Roll the gamble.
Samantha is setting up an attribute to reference employees. She wants to ensure that the attribute can reference not only direct employee objects, but also contracts, partners. Which are which are child objects employee? Which setting should Samantha?
You're welcome.
Broken qual, broken clock.
What do you mean broken clock? Let's go to Vegas and let's spend some money.
You already tried that, remember?
No.
All right, so let's take a look at. So one of the things that we mentioned with asset relationships is that you can. It would help out with. Filters and queries and the way that you query assets is you use a special language, not J Quill or J Q L, but AQL. Or A Quill or well, AQL.
The only people calling it A Quill is Robine.
Yeah, so we're we're on team A Quill. Let's find out what A Quill is.
It's what comes for B Quill.
I'm just wondering how far before we get to Nike Will, but you know.
Twelve.
Maybe. All right, so. How do we search for assets? We can do some of these things. We can do an object search ski. We can uh, do some of these things. Uh, we can do an object search ski, uh, object schema search. Uh, so uh, there is a search field up at the top of the object schema view. We can uh, do a text search. Asset will return uh, objects from that uh, current schema that have a matching label, key or ID. Um, it also does search the text attributes. So that's one way of doing it. The other way of doing it is the object basic search, which is um, when you have the object type, you can click on the filter icon to open the basic search tab. Select an attribute to search against, enter your search term. You get the list of objects filtered according to that search. And then you can click uh, filter search again to refine the uh, results further. Um, one thing that this won't allow you to do is you can't search for empty values. You also cannot string these things together. You can't uh, do filter search and filter search, um, especially for things like references. When you do these filter searches, they are and searches. So it's um, this and this. So not as uh, it's only one type of complexity, which leads us to the advanced object search. Which uses assets query language or A Q L or A Quill. Um, but if you don't know, uh, if you're not up on your A Quill, uh, you can always start by creating that basic search. And then when the results are returned, click on the advanced tab, that, which is a lot like J Q L, you can do a basic search in J Q L, which is through a series of attributes. But then you can kinda click on the uh, from basic to J Q L. And uh, it will return the results on your filter as a uh, J Q L query. Same type of thing happens here. So this will help you kind of get a leg up on your, your A Quill. Now, one thing, uh, one difference between uh, A Q L and, and uh, J Q L or J Quill. Uh, unfortunately, no such thing as autocomplete, so. Yeah, I know. Boo hiss, boo hiss. That, that, that should be something uh, up, up for Jack, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I wonder if we'll be talking about that anytime soon with someone who may know something about like the original history.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. Well, I really hope that's soon.
Tomorrow would be ideal, about 2:00 PM Pacific, 5:00 PM Eastern.
Yeah, that would be, yeah. Who do you think would be a really good person to talk about that?
Alex, do you know?
Mark Cruz.
He's lost the plot.
Robertine.
We're advertising, we're advertising tomorrow's show.
Does the show tomorrow?
Yeah.
Oh, Jack. You don't know Jack?
Yeah, who would be a good person to talk to about Jack?
Oh, Jens.
You know, I propose, I propose you don't know Jack as, as a show title and Jens, Jens was like, I don't know if that's true since I commented on the original Jack uh, items as. So I was like, okay.
As Jack?
Are we gonna have Jens give us like a history of Jack?
Little bit, maybe. Bones of Jens wants to give a history on Jack.
Oh, Jens loves giving you history.
Wait, did you just call him Jens?
I say Jens with the Y.
Okay, just wanna make sure that you're, you're, you're doing.
My Germans on point.
Proper, yeah, you're giving it the proper German umph. Wumpapa. Alright, moving on to A Q L. Uh, so it's very, very similar to J Q L. Alright, uh, what you can do is you can write queries to return one or more objects. Alright, uh, A Q L can be used as part of automation rules. Uh, so that you can set up the particular assets or the particular objects that need to be, uh, that you can perform actions against. Uh, you can use A Q L as a way of narrowing down a select list of asset objects, right? You can also uh, uh, when setting values in an attribute, you can use that to, uh, you can use A Q L to limit the possible values in there. So, and then finally, you can use A Q L along with J Q L to perform some advanced queries. So uh, basic syntax rules. Uh, there must always be an attribute name on the left side of a query. That's a lot like. Uh, so this is part of A Q L where attribute name is on the left side. And then uh, desired values are, are on the right. Uh, if there are spaces in attribute names or values, you, you have to surround it with double quotes. So for example here, uh, for our attribute service team, that's in double quotes because of the space between service and team. Uh, if the double quotes are inside of an attribute name, you use a backslash to escape the uh, the first double quote. So for example, uh, if we're talking about like the size of MacBook Pros and we use fifteen inch, um, we have to write it as fifteen backslash. And then the uh, the double quote. So and because uh, there is a uh, space, we surround the whole thing with double quotes.
I'm sorry here, um, but whoever entered this did not know what it's doing, cause I would have just saved the effort to put I N. Yeah, that's true. Probably cost them more effort to put the quote in there to represent inches than if they just typed I N.
Alright, now, A Q L is case sensitive for the attribute names. But it's not case sensitive for the value. So case sensitive on the left, not case sensitive on the right. So if we had an, uh, if we had an attribute name called operating system, capital O, capital S, operating system is different from little O, little S, operating system.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so here are a few sample A Q L queries. Uh, we wanna find an object that has the name Jira Service Management. Name equals Jira Service Management. It is in quotes because we have spaces in between. Uh, what if we wanted to do a wildcard text search? Uh, so anything that contains the text word Jira. Uh, in J Q L, you all know of that as the tilde. In A Q L, it's you use the keyword like. So name like Jira. Uh, finding all objects of a particular object type. So object type note, note the capital T equals business service. Alright, and then if you wanna find objects, um, where you wanna look for more than one value. This is where, if you remember your J Q L, you'd be using in. And then the surrounding values in, in parentheses, same principle in A Q L. Operating system in, and then our values inside of, inside of parentheses.
So. Before we get too much further along, Bob, we are at time.
Okay.
Wah wah wah.
Yep. So we're gonna have to get into functions and try and get Alex to understand how dates work in uh, queries.
I'll have you know, I got a C plus in my SQL class.
How many years ago?
Oh, fifteen.
It shows.
Is that, is that sequel still valid?
Should be. Long as uh, people are still using uh, Ada and, and Fortran. I'm sure somebody's still using MySQL out there somewhere.
I mean, data center still runs on MySQL.
There you go, see.
I learned on Oracle, so.
I applied to uh, MongoDB once, when they introduced that whole new versions of databases and uh, I, I got a cup saying, sorry, your application was not good, but here's a cup as a this consolation prize. Every company should do that when they reject you instead of that dreaded email that should send you a consolation prize. I'll never forget that cup. Alright, does MongoDB still exist?
Yes, yes, it does.
Oh, yeah. But I think other, other uh, MongoDB is um, ah, all the new fangled ones. No, uh, a no Q L?
Yeah, no Q L.
Yeah. So.
Which seems to defeat the point.
True, but I thought it had been um, taken over. Um, depending upon what your, what your cloud technology is, right? Uh, I think Amazon has its own flavor. I think GCP does Mongo. Or do they, or do they do other ones too? I think they do other ones too.
I think they do other ones too, but Mongo is an option under GCP.
Yeah.
And I want to say sure did Mongo, but they also had their own flavors.
Yeah.
MongoDB career website is down. Oh, there it is.
Alex needs more cups.
Mugs.
What, he didn't get enough in Barcelona?
Were there any cups?
I don't know. Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't in Barcelona.
There were, comes Alex.
I got like three or four. This is my team twenty-four or five-one. I like a lot.
Anyways. Yes, you made sure of that.
Was it in your box that I gave you?
Uh, no, it was at the community space, but you made sure I went over there and got one.
Oh, right, right, yeah. I gave Ronnie a box with all his belongings from team twenty-five. Now you have your team twenty-five pin.
Uh, that I do. Anyways.
Bobby, you should have seen him. There was a little gap in his badge where he has like team twenty-one, two, three, four. And then team twenty-five Europe and he's like, wait, I'm missing a badge. And when he came to Anna, to the Long Beach event, I totally, like, apparently I got him the badge. It was in that box.
It's.
Wait, 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 wait. I mailed my stuff to, to, to Ronnie, all the stuff that, that he missed that people gave him, particularly uh, Saget.
Yes, yes, you did.
I did. And, and so basically Alex waited until he saw you next.
Second off.
So that he could give it to you and inconvenience your packing.
Yeah, cause I would, I was gonna take it to Barcelona, but I was like, wait, now I gotta carry this stuff halfway around the world. Ronnie's gonna come to my house in two weeks. I was waiting, I'll wait two weeks. Did you leave anything behind in the hotel?
No, actually, I got it all home.
In Long Beach?
Yeah, at Long Beach.
That's probably cause you didn't have a three AM flight.
That helped.
That was funny, man. Only you would, only you would pull that off.
I made it.
Bobby, did you ever hear about the?
Let's talk about it another time.
Yeah, let's talk about it another time. I'm, uh, you know, uh, otherwise, we're just gonna give more stuff to, that Rodney's gonna cut in the supercut, so.
Just one time?
At band camp?
At bank?
Again, Alex, I am a flute player.
Oh, I pissed Ronnie off, cause I did not know what class of instrument he played. I got a whole lesson on what the wood.
We'll catch you guys next time.
Alright, bye everybody. So actually, see you tomorrow.